You're the only people on the agenda. And you can, you can sit there, come up here, whatever you like. And you know Christine, you know Maria? And we have two board members who are eligible who can't come. One is sick. He's got an ulcer problem. And the other one had a family issue. So the three of us, great. And it's a little past 6:30. I'd like to open this meeting on August 12. We have one application that we're going to review. For 75 Monroe. And I'm going to make an opening statement here that positions this. If you feel the need to take off your mask if you've been vaccinated when you talk, go ahead.
No, no.
No?
No.
No, we're asking everybody vaccinated because of Delta variant.
Yep.
It doesn't matter if you're vaccinated for that. So we've been asking everybody to wear their masks.
Can we take it off to drink our water? Okay. Just an opening statement here. Please note that the board will not be voting or making any decisions regarding the project at this meeting at this time. Please note that the board is not accepting public comment at this meeting. However, the public may submit comments and questions to the village clerk or deputy clerk for responses. And submitted to the village website or bring it in in person.
Yeah, Bill, I think the intent would be that we would get, deal with those if the next time we met those questions.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure that we respond to any questions from the public. And we will forward them to the applicants as well. So it's just for this meeting that we're not taking public comments or questions. And I'm going to ask Marina to poll the panel as to whether anybody needs to recuse themselves. Your wish, please.
Okay, member Lenham. Member Mario.
I don't need to recuse myself.
Okay. And Sherwood McBrigh.
I do not wish to recuse myself or need to. Okay. Turn it over to you if you would present, you did help us out by sending copies of your proposal. And we appreciate it if you'd want to talk about that proposal.
Right, and I see everyone has a copy of it.
Yeah.
We have lots of extra copies in case, okay, perfect.
I'm gonna grab one of those because I was sharing with my husband.
You got? Well, no, we want the new one.
I'm at minus, I didn't know Korea had another one.
I just forgot yours. The other one in my house.
So is the date on yours 12th August? Just to confirm.
Oh, I've got five August.
Now, that's, it's an old one. So, yeah.
We're reaching, we this is the one I have and I forgot to have the other one.
And it starts with, it's 17 pages long.
No, I don't have that.
What's the date?
This is July.
Okay, I'll get rid of that.
Yeah. I will give you this. Does anyone else have another August 12th, 17th?
We, it combined the two that I sent, that's, that's younger.
Oh.
Okay, because it was a July and it was an August. Yeah, so this one, okay, this is combined, perfect.
July one.
Okay, that's fine, I got, I got one.
Do you have the correct one? Is that your same file?
The drawings are the same.
Drawings have this, there's one, it's, there's more detail.
Exactly.
Yes, there's a little more detail.
Yeah.
Elevations and other things so we can talk a little bit more about other details. And I made a bigger printout so I can flip through here and you can take notes. That was the idea and hope of our meeting tonight.
All right, well, thank you for sitting down with us. It's been a long time. Yeah. I sincerely appreciate it. We, as you know, we've been through the whole thing for the last 12 years. I won't reiterate it. We all, we were there through most of it. I really hope to restart here. We've made a reapplication. We revised our application. And so, the beginning of the year, we received a letter from Hodgson Russ with some recommendations. I assume that you guys were involved.
That's the February 23rd letter.
February 23rd letter.
We were very involved.
We received that. And I said, okay, we really need to get a new architect and rethink where we were and where we're going. So we hired CJS. CJS has done a number of projects for us. Most recently, they designed and we built 625 Goodman, South Goodman Streets on the expressway. Contemporary four or five story building, 100 units. In this process, I'd love to show you that because there's some components that, that would be similar here. Obviously, not the height, not the size, but as we go forward, maybe that's something we can do. We hired CJS not only because they're good multifamily designers, Dirk Schneider, and they're both owners of the company. Dirk Schneider is the current chairman of the town of Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board.
Just in review, Mr. Preservation Board.
So he knows this stuff cold. And, and he also lives in Pittsburgh. So, you know, not only, he cares for this area unquestionably. So it's a unique perspective. And Craig was the past chairman of the Historic Preservation Board in the city of Rochester. And he was also a trustee of the Landmark Society. So they have a unique perspective of preservation and new construction. And so this team really thought through this. And they'll go, they'll go through some of their history, but I made some notes of the, of the history. I won't go back through all of it, but there's some important things that we need to remember as we, as we go through this. We know that the, this site is a specific zone called R5. And it's specifically for high density residential. And that kind of sets a framework. You know, this isn't a blank sheet of paper that we can design whatever we want. There's a framework here. You all remember, we went through a special permit process. We got the special permit in 2012. Specifically allows multifamily and restaurants. We got the final site plan approval in 2014. After the site plan approval, we spent $6 million, as you probably remember, remediating this Brownfield site. As, you can remember what it was. And we cleaned 90,000 tons of contaminated soil off the site at my expense. In 2019, the special use permit was recertified. So it's up to date. For the site plan approval, it's been reapproved six times. And so that's current also. So there's a framework of approvals that we've been through. This is not a blank sheet. Back to the February 23rd letter. I know this board took their time and they set criteria of what they wanted to see. And we really used that as our guide as we developed this. The key things were green space, landscaping, building width and, and height, parking. And, and you know, you kind of set a parameter for a volumetric cubic area of living space. And that's really where we, we concentrated. All that put together, I handed the drawings to these guys and I said, make it work. At the end, it has to be financially viable for me. It has to meet the criteria that you're looking for. It has to be visually, visually appealing and marketable. Otherwise, it doesn't work for anybody. And so it's a tall task, but I, I think that they did it. So putting that all together, as we go through this, I want you to remember that what we're going to show you is, has less height than the old plan. It has less footprint by 15%. It has fewer stories. There's no fourth story anymore. The widths of the building are 67 feet. We meet the parameter. There's less parking, there's more landscaping. There's 20% less building length. And when you take the volume as a whole, it's 35% less than the old plan. Those are key things as we're going through this to remember. Those are the criteria that we've met. So
Did I add one thing? You talked twice about parking. Parking is not within our, this board's authority.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I just, I mentioned parking because it's an important factor Yes. in the building design because as they're going to describe, we, we, we think it's important to have parking underneath the building. Not only for marketing, because people don't want to, you know, would prefer to have garage parking, but also so you don't see as many cars outside. So we think it's very important. But this plan has less parking than the other plan outside. And I think inside, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think it's close. So with that, I'll, I'll give it back to the architects. Dirk is going to talk about how this is compatible with the village. And then Craig's going to get into detail of what the buildings are, how he designed them and what they are. So, thanks again.
It's not noon. It'll go three times at least. Next time, we'll tell them they're not allowed to do that while we're having a meeting. No emergencies, please. So, just would like to get started on this page real quick. And I know Christine, you've been using us. I just want to highlight a few other projects so you understand in case you should go on our website, just to inform yourself about ourselves. We have done in the recent past, building restoration. So when I was involved for over 20 years, it was the Frank Lloyd Restoration South of Buffalo Great Cliff Estates. They finally got out of the shadow of the Martin House as their family was finished and they started to get funds. We're doing National Women's Hall of Fame, which is a historic tax credit project in Santa Fe Falls. We did the Eastman School of Music renovation and expansion to it from the Canadian Way. And did the growth street neighborhood that also is kind of a, a new neighborhood from the 80s and late 70s.
Yeah. It's a preservation district with a lot of new construction inside the district. So it's kind of a balance of both.
Yeah, and then I have done many, many projects at Hobart Williams Smith Colleges, right on their main street. Additions, renovations. So I think we're, we understand what it takes to keep a house, an existing historic house livable. And I also feel like we have a good understanding of what the texture means of historic neighborhood and inserting something that is fresh, but is reacting and respecting the old architecture that is, that is currently there. So let me ask you this. We, we held up a model of, of one that's local Erie Station Village. Yeah. And I heard that you were involved with that, is that right? Correct. You were the architect for Erie Station Village? We did phase three for them.
Sure, we entered, I believe.
You really did?
I think so.
It's all burned together.
Yeah, so we didn't have to pay them off. We were the original planners for that site that was done out of Pittsburgh by
Something with a D.
Urban Design Associates, I think. But, so we took it from there and did the phase two.
So you, you basically finished it?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we do a lot of other work for one of our properties, one of our homes, the Erie Station Village. We did a project on South Avenue. For them, it's in the kind of South Avenue neighborhood.
Southern Hickory.
Right, Southern Hickory Place. We're doing a strong neighborhood, which is a corner of properties component mixed use there, which is all, I think, very respectful of kind of the urban kind of Union Street, Park Avenue neighborhood.
Yes. So I think based on that, and we're still working currently on the Buffalo Central Terminal. We're trying to make it watertight, so it hopefully won't collapse. They're working on that. And H.H. Richardson, we're working on a few projects there right now. I have the, in the own set park in Buffalo. So I think those are some projects that I think just to let you know that we know what it takes to maintain old buildings, but also what it takes to be respectful to them and how to add on to it or be within its proximity. On this page, I really just wanted to remind everyone, and Chris showed you the, the sheet as well. This is really in our mind, kind of where we came from, right? This is the site, what it was. And I think, even though it's overgrown right now, cleaned up, I think it will be a great asset to the village and to the, to the canal. So we really took your letter that was provided to us through Chris, the lawyers with your goals too hard and really started looking into, there were some key requirements of buildings being not wider than 75 and 100 feet. And 67.
Not longer than 75.
Ah, yes, yes.
And the width was 67.
67, yes. So we started looking at this and really to look what it means and put parking underneath. And at the end, as we just started laying everything out, we really felt that it was not very compatible with the area, the district that it's really going into.
Pardon me, what was not compatible?
The the buildings of, so we looked at this, you mentioned 75 and 100. And the county, we would have ended up with about 11 buildings that are also not connected, would have had a lot of roads and asphalt, less green space with 11 buildings than, than the proposal that we will be presenting to you later on. So then, as we did this exercise, we just looked at the surrounding buildings that are in that area. And really, we're looking at what are we building? And, and we know we have the office park there between the 90 and 133 feet in length. Then we have Calbots over here. And I know this is not the village across the street, it's the town, but it's still kind of part of what it's neighboring to. And those buildings are all really long, including a 530 foot building. And then you have Pittsburgh Sutherland facing at 470 feet. And then your neighborhoods or your more residential buildings start after the railroad tracks going into the village. And then also, we just started looking at the length of this block, for example, from Monroe to the cut through. I mean, this is about 225 feet. But the buildings are all very distinct, right? They're their own little collages of finishes. So I think seeing this, how this kind of came together with also the facade isn't all aligned, they're kind of stepping in and out. So we really were looking into, how can we create use, what was written in the letter, but also make the building efficient and the parking efficient and get more parking under it? How can we create a look that is something like this in, in finishes and moving in and out to not be just this one big endless building? And putting it on the site here, that then also is more in keeping with the length of the buildings across the street here. So we really think that if this is our neighborhood and our neighborhood character of the parcel, that the proposal that we're really, that we came up with, and here you can see the individual buildings. You'd have to have roads to get into the parking, if you even have parking. And it just gets longer and longer. Here, we would have a few entry points and we have a site plan where you can see that a little bit better.
Yeah, the only issue I can take with what you just said is this is not the village, as you said.
Correct.
And it is not what you see when you're driving up to the parish.
But it's what you see when you leave, right? It's still, it's part of a neighborhood you cross.
Barely, yes.
And I think the question we were asking ourselves is, you know, what creates an identifiable building? Right? Is it the separation between the buildings or is it the materials and the kind of individual character of these individual pieces, right? You can have a block of buildings like you have in the village and you see them as independent buildings, even though they are connected. So we're trying to take that idea and say, we want to create the appearance of the scale that you're outlining, the 75 feet. Create that as the visual impression, but still aggregate some of these together so that we can get efficiencies in parking and more green space and other advantages that we get, that we think are beneficial. But the perception is still that you have these smaller buildings, even if they are in fact touching. Now, we might be able to move from one building to another inside, whereas you wouldn't do that on Main Street. These are, you know, individual buildings with individual entrances. We would also have those individual entrances, but we might also have connectivity inside, just to make fewer elevators and things like that.
May I ask you, which drawing? Kind, what, of all the drawings that you have here, where can I see what you're, you are, you are saying that?
When Dirk gets there.
Yes, so I think here. Yep, so, so from here on, we will move to so this is what we are now. This is now starting, what we're proposing with a parking underneath. We took some of our elements and rotated them to create plaza space.
One page.
And, and here is just the first outline of overall building widths. And then they're broken down further on the next sheets to show you how the buildings are made up. And Craig will walk you through a little bit more through the different finishes and what our thoughts were about that, how we think we're achieving your intent in the letter by still, like Craig just said, still maintaining an efficiency within, on the inside of the building.
Right, so, you know.
Do you want to switch real quick?
No, it's okay. So it's what we're saying, you know, we're trying to respect the letter, do what we can to be as close to the letter as we can and look at that and say, what are the biggest priorities? So we thought, obviously, the volume is a really important one.
Total volume.
Total volume. So we want to hit that number. So, okay, we proved ourselves we can do that. So that's one that we thought was really important. Then we thought green space was also really important. So we felt like if each of these buildings was individual, with separations between, you know, these little alleys or small slots of space that aren't very usable or even don't add a lot of value to the site. So by pushing the buildings together, we get efficiencies in parking, we get less surface parking, we get more green space. And we can still maintain visual perception of individual buildings, even if they're not by building codes, you know, from a building code standpoint, they might be defined as a single building, but you wouldn't necessarily recognize them as such. We've done other projects like this where, you know, they, they do these in New York, in New York. You know, they used to build brownstones all individuals and no, no connections. Now, some of the blocks that they build, it's all looks like brownstones, but there's actually connectivity behind, you know. So you still want all those entrances on the street. You want the kind of potential energy that you get with all the entrances. You want the kind of interest that you get with all the entrances. And we want that too. But this building still functions better for us from a parking standpoint and accessibility standpoint with elevators and things like that.
So, I, so I just, because we're going, this is going to be a long presentation, so I had to be sure, not to, I don't mean to interrupt, but I want to be sure that I understand. So what you're saying, and I'm repeating, so I'm sure that I understand, that, that your intention is to, you, you look at Main Street. And when, when we see Main Street is a series of buildings that are really close together that create a massing, a, a, a feeling of a long massing of very many different little buildings.
That's correct.
And that in your project, that's your intention. You're trying to recreate, you know, to, to bring that intention to the project.
So we can scale the project like that, right?
Okay.
The village scale is much more about that than larger buildings. Even though there's larger buildings across the canal, you know, the, the scale in the villages. And it's much more residential and kind of a human scale, right? And I think preserving that also preserves the character of the village because that's one of the things people like about the village is when you walk, it's a very walkable, you know.
It doesn't overpower you as a human, yeah.
It's not monotonous, right? You don't walk down the street and think, oh my gosh, how, when am I going to get past the end of this building? You know, it's just forever, right? So we want to create that type of pedestrian experience, that kind of scale. And I think, you know, even if we push some buildings together, it doesn't detract from that. It, it doesn't hurt that, we, we don't believe it hurts that at all. And in fact, by creating more green space, we think there's advantages to that. But you've got to design in such a way that it's perceived as a series of events, not one 400 foot long event. Or in our case, maybe it's 150 foot long event. But ours, we break it down to pieces of 30 and 40 feet, you know, which is kind of consistent with what, what you've got in the village. So if you turn, maybe if you go back to page nine.
Yeah, page nine.
Yeah, so let's go with page nine.
Yep.
So, you know, we're still at a very conceptual stage. We're still, you know, at the beginning. And that's why, you know, we want to talk to you before we get too far down the road and find out we're going down the wrong road. So it's still very conceptual, but you can see here that the individual kind of pieces that have been aggregated together, right? So you can see that you might have four or five blocks that are all pushed together before you have a slimmer of space in between. So we have a longer collection of buildings, but not necessarily, you know, individual buildings perceived as, as that long, right? And so we can still maintain this, the right scale. You know, this kind of very residential and kind of traditional scale. And we can do that both through this massing, like Dirk said, going in and out with the facade and kind of changing the plane, changing the material. And we can create that scale that we're looking for. So that's the kind of big idea. Then in addition to that, as we're talking about, we're only three stories high, but on the canal side, half of it is only two stories high. So we're pushing as much of the three story portions of the buildings to the back of the site as possible. So as you walk down the canal, you see two story with three story behind. You know, and then you see a little bit three story and then you see another two story. And then pushing all the rest of the three to the back just gives you again, just a more interesting texture and sort of a better scale for the, for the project. And then the other thing it does, because we're using a lot of flat roofs, is we can occupy those roofs and we can put terraces up there with vegetation and people.
And pergola.
We can create more energy up there, right? So we want to activate the site because one of the things that's going to make it nice is if you've got things like, well, roof terraces or porches or balconies or things that people, whether there's a person on it or not, it's potential energy for the site. You know, it shows that there's life there. It shows there's activities. You can visualize what happens there. You know, if you just have a blank wall, you can visualize what happens, nothing happens, right? If you walk down a street in Brooklyn as an example, you walk down one of the side streets there, there's all kinds of stoops and doors and gardens and things. But those side streets don't have a lot of activity. You might not even see a person, you know, on your walk on one of those side streets. But there's so much potential energy there because of all the kind of active elements that are built into the building. And I think that's what we're trying to get to. Traditional buildings have more of that. But I think with roof terraces and entrances, if they come on our buildings, it creates that same potential energy, right? And then absolutely real energy too, people will be there.
And that's one of the things we liked about the Erie Station. Do we have that Erie Station village picture thing? That's one of the things we liked about that. It had stoops and
Yeah, yep.
And it looked like this village where you could sit on your porch.
Yeah, and you know, we don't think we can do a project that is part of this village. And we don't think we should try and compete with that or dilute that. So we're proposing to use more of an industrial vernacular, kind of the, kind of vernacular you see along the canal. You know, with, you know, metal siding and concrete and wood, but not traditional details. Because the traditional details in the village are more about the neighborhoods. And even though this is a neighborhood, because it's on a canal, it's really more of an industrial vernacular. So we have, and we just feel like we can do more respect in that regard. You can kind of bridge the gap between contemporary and traditional with a vernacular building than you can with a building that's historic style, right? If you're doing a Italianate or, you know, a Renaissance revival building, you've got to be, you've got to have real columns with, you know, capitals and, you know, all kinds of nice trim.
I want to, so here, so the village has how many? 10 or seven buildings that are really unique? That make, you know, are, I don't know, just a handful of very unique, like, like we can say Italianate or we can say Victorian, but the rest
No, it's true.
is very, is kind of the vernacular.
Yeah, it's sort of vernacular.
And the, what makes it one style or the other are the little decorations that were put by people over time. The power of this village The power of this village. And the beauty of the historic is that proportion. Is that scale, is the massing of the humble vernacular.
No, I, I agree with that, and I, I think, and even in the industrial vernacular that you have. Older industrial buildings are still built at a residential. Well, they still have a residential scale or human scale, you know, a barn. Traditional barn still has small windows, it doesn't have huge windows, you know?
Yeah.
And even other industrial buildings like the, what's it called, the, the mill down here.
The flour mill.
Right, it has a window that's kind of in scale with a residential window.
Yes.
And I think that's where we, we think you can be successful, we can use more of an industrial palette. But still maintain the, the feel of human scale, because the scaled elements that we're gonna use. These are apartments, we, we want that type of scale, right? So our windows will be those type of windows, you know what I'm saying?
So what, what, what I think that you're saying too is, is bringing those historic elements or decorative elements. Will take away from, you, you are diluting the reality of. You cannot, but, and that's fantastic, because that's not, never has been the intention, because. One of the things we have said since the beginning, we don't want Epcot Center.
Yeah.
We don't want to go to Vegas to pretend that we are, no, we want. We, it's not what we want, I, we believe that respecting the character of the village is understanding its scale. And to understand character and scale. We have to respect and honor the proportions of what it's around.
And we think it's more about proportions and materials and scale. And it's less about the details, because we can't. I don't think we're replicating the traditional details in terms of crown moldings.
No.
Any kind of columns and railings, balustrades, that's not where we want to go, because. It won't cheapen the rest of the village in my mind, you know, it doesn't help. Uh, when you walk down the canal in front of, uh, you know, uh. I was proud, I enjoy to say Sean Place, I know Sean Place is not right, but.
They say, yeah, that's kind of the big thing, so those who, yeah, Shane or Sean.
Yeah.
Okay. We take anything. We take it.
You can throw me out now. Um, but you walk through there, you know, whether it's a lens or whether it's a bill or these other arms and things. You know, those materials and the level of detail there is, I think, quite successful, because it doesn't. Challenge the rest of the village, it just is quiet, you know, it's fairly quiet, which I think is good, and we want to be quiet, but with. You know, the, like I say, potential energy, you know, through scale and proportion and, and entrances and balconies and roof terraces, that give it life, right? How do you, how do you give it life? Because a lot of modern stuff is pretty sterile, because of. It just not human anymore, you know what I'm saying, they remove a lot of the character. In terms of the cues about use, you know, the, the, how you see the building being used, that's really beyond display. So, I'm getting a little off track, but, so, so we add any of these buildings together, we get rid of some parking, we get more green space. Then if you turn the page, now I'm gonna be on page ten, and you know, like I said, these are really just, you know. Concepts, you can see.
So this is really now this building, this first building.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
So you can see in, you know, what's labeled currently as building A, B, and C. The first building, A, has two-story portions on the ends with a three-story portion in the middle. And there will be a number of different materials across the side and from front to back, so the, the two-story portion. Probably a different material than the three-story behind, again, to kind of break down the massing. And then the people, balconies and terraces and roofs, roof terraces and so on and so forth. You go to the next building.
Now, there is no separation between the two-story and three-story.
No, the length of that building, that is, you know, one continuous hundred and sixty-eight feet, but we can change materials. You know, well, this shows really three times, we could do it four or five times.
And, and the brown, uh, the darker portion is also proud of the facade, so.
As you can see here, there's building breaks, this is, it might be a four-foot break, behind here is another two-foot break. It pushes and pulls as it goes, creating that separation.
Exactly. And then we move to building B, and building B now, we drop the center portion down to two stories, the roof terraces now are in the middle, so it's like a big amount of roof terrace for this. And then the larger, you know, three-story pieces are on the end, and then again, the background building. The three-story building behind the two-story in the center, we'd be seeing, you know, that distance, and again, maybe as a, another material. And then you go to the third building, building C, which gets a lot narrower.
Hang on one second, Craig.
Oh, sorry.
You understand what he's saying on this?
You got that?
The, this is only two stories from the canal, but there's three story behind it, I understand.
Yes.
And that creates a lot more.
And it changes as the building goes.
Without that, this thing, you know, gets very flat, and you'll get, you know, when you change the profile on the sky, and change the elevation of the building. On the facade, you get a lot more interest, so we might even have, you know, little. Uh, you know, there could be a little hoopla or a little tower up here or something like that to add even more interest, but. Changing that fundamental height of the building as we go along is gonna help us a lot, I think.
Let me ask you this, what is your reason? I, I understand green spaces, it's, green space is not so much our issue.
Yeah.
But what is your reason for not separating these two-story backed up by three-story structures? From the center section by ten feet or whatever?
Well, two reasons, I mean, you know, one reason is because we want to put parking below here that's sufficient and can work well, so we want to maximize our parking below the building. Number two.
But like, could you not put parking under that total? I mean, I remember saying, you ever see the park in Chicago?
I was just, two weeks ago.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah.
Underneath that whole park, it's beautiful.
I was on my dog. And you, you know, yeah, it's, it's.
Now, could you not do that with, if, if you pull those two. End wings away from the center section by, I don't know, ten, fifteen feet? Could you not put a parking area under the whole thing?
Again, I think it goes to efficiency. So if you go back to this drawing, if you had all individuals, you'd have. So let's go back to this, this is what you're saying, why can't you just break all the buildings apart, right? So in this case, you need thirteen elevators. Uh, you have, uh, it, it's less efficient, because it's more difficult to get the parking in, you'd have to pull them apart. In some way to get drive aisles to get in, in the middle of the building. Because you couldn't, you wouldn't have a parking area that goes, I don't know, eighteen hundred feet.
Essentially, connect those.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's what we're doing here, we have that twenty-foot break and the parking continues.
Is that right, so you're parking under this whole section?
The parking continues, and here we have a break where you can actually walk through, we, we, we looked at the. We looked at the ten-feet separation or even tighter, but then, uh, also about. Privacy, it's just, it's almost you're a little bit too close to your neighbor, and I don't think that's really.
With a couple probably black walls, which stuck to us a lot of good, and, and the gap, although you get some separation. We, we just didn't think it bought us much, and I think as, as Chris was saying. The elevator issue is a real issue, so we want accessibility to all of these units. And so if we had to build, uh, a building with three elevators or four elevators instead of one. It's not only from a just cost perspective, it's even from a. Well, and even by usability perspective, it just gets cumbersome, you know, like all these elevators come drawn into the garage, we got four elevators down the garage, you know, at some point. It doesn't make, it's not as user-friendly, and it certainly isn't as cost effective, right? It just didn't seem like it's justifiable.
And we really felt quite often, when you see in newer construction material changes, maybe only the depth of a brick, right, a four-inch step in materials. We really, um, were going back and forth, and this is really where the sixty-seven feet comes in. Really wanted to pull it and really make a meaningful separation between these planes. And not separating it this way to separate, but more in the shadow lines, it's.
Yeah, we think we can more, we're just going this way than going this way, in those, you need some, some gaps, and we want to have some gaps, we want them to be meaningful.
And then we, we did it here with a big set of stairs, that you can, if you are on the other side, you can go through. You can see the canal through these bigger viewsheds instead of all these little viewsheds. That people just also would feel uncomfortable even walking through.
Are these two buildings connected with a?
No, they're connected. Underneath for the parking, and then they have their stair and elevators coming in here and entry points, you'll see it. Yep, so there's a twenty-foot separation, here's a twenty-four-foot separation, and this is the only area where it's actually paved. Where you can come with your car and you drive under, and then this is all parking under here, and you can also turn in here, so waste. Another, uh, collection is over on this side, also out of sight.
So if you were to do what I suggested, then you would. You, you might be able to do it with parking, but you've, you've got a, uh, under the whole thing, but you've got elevators.
Right, exactly, right. That, the parking is, would be certainly doable.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be as cost-effective, but it's totally doable, the elevator thing is more problematic, from, from my perspective.
I actually think that, um. It's more successful if you do have these. Independent buildings that are connected for the variety of the site, I would much rather see. The, the, the different buildings, um, in the way that you presented, I think this is just, just showing this. Section of Main Street and how that's exactly what we have up there, and we don't have ten-foot alleys between each of these buildings, they are actually connected.
Yeah, and even only once in a while, which is good, you know, I think there's some breaks, but not every break, right? You don't want it every time, because it gets so repetitive or monotonous, I think at some point it's like too much, you need like. Some, some breaks, but you need some not breaks, right? So it's kind of like a balance.
Uh, how were they able to make, um. That property that we talked about in Henrietta so efficient? When they had so many buildings?
So, there's a provision in the code that allows you to. Provide accessible units only on the ground floor, right? So you don't need to put an elevator in every residential building. If you have a non-elevator building, you just say, okay, I'm not gonna have an elevator. Then you can make the ground floor accessible, and the other floors are not required to be.
So you're saying Erie Station Village probably didn't have elevators in those two stories?
No elevators anywhere.
But the market here, I think, there's an expectation that you have elevator services up above, this is not a walk-up situation. Erie Station Village, the entire village. There's no elevators, there's not a single elevator. So you got, you know, and that's fine, you got three-story buildings that are walk-ups, and I think they found the right market for that.
Young professionals and.
And, and it's fine, but I, I don't think that's where, where the market is for this. And once you put an elevator in, then everything in that building has to be accessible. Right, so you, there's, so you can't, you either go no elevator, first floor only, or simply put elevator in your own, so that's kind of where they need to.
Um, I, I just, I don't really want to move into style before massing a site.
Right, yeah.
Um, what, uh, I wanted to add on was that, uh, while I, I do like the idea of interconnected buildings, I believe that's gonna be the. The big challenge in making these individual buildings not look, um. Well, usually you would have those things develop over time, right?
Right, yeah.
And of course, these are all gonna be built at the same time, and just, just to make that successful will be the challenge.
I agree with that, I'm not going to be polite, I'm going on our website real, real quick, while we're talking, uh, the, we have a nice rendering of what we're doing right now on Union Street. That I think is really, since this is conceptual, you can see what. What we're doing there, so you can continue, don't wait for me to find.
Yeah, so we're, we're doing, as Dirk said, we're doing a project on Union Street right now, for, for Howard, for, for, St. Louis, Erie Station Village. And it is this kind of building where we have a ground floor with multiple entrances to some essentially walk-ups. Um, and there's provisions in the code that we can navigate to make that happen. And then the other floors are a continuous corridor that link all these buildings together, so it's one building, it's used as one building, permitted as one building. But it has, you know, I don't know, eight entrances or ten, maybe twelve entrances, you know, the different units on the ground floor, plus my position should be upper levels. And it looks like a series of buildings, but it's one building, um, so. You find it, yeah, there you go. Now, it's not what we're proposing to do here, but it's the same idea.
So here is, um, and some windows have kind of segmented tops, others, uh, they have different window heights, it's not all. One cookie cutter, one brick and, uh, other, other siding materials. And it's all, it's, this building is five hundred and forty feet long.
But that looks massive to me.
But it's.
What a different scale, he's just showing.
But it's a different scale, but I'm just telling you.
But it's the same kind of idea, this is meant to be in the, you know, this is center city district of City Drive, right, the center city district, so. And so the light is, a lot of light is unlimited there.
So, but here just with the window heads and the different details that can be then broadened. Um, is really, I think, once we develop and we're clear with the massing, that we're heading in the right direction.
And the only thing that really doesn't do, of course, it doesn't step, right? We have the whole building at a single height all the way across, here we're saying, you know, the front face, the canal side is two stories, then.
Yeah.
So we have a more modulation here, this maybe is the next generation. But it's obviously a different project, you know, we can compare something with the others, right?
Yeah.
So. You want, talk about this, or do I go to the next page? I'm not gonna. So, so you get, if I'm on page eleven now, you can see, you know, the back, the, the side that faces the office part, essentially. And then the sides of these buildings. And I think, you know, the, the east elevation of the lower left really shows how, like Dirk was talking about, how you can change the, the, uh. The face of the building, you know, parts are pulled out, parts are pushed back, you know, inside the building, we can kind of break the massing down, so it's small as pieces. I, I think you're right, the trip will be to make this look like it's either always been there, or that it was a logical kind of. Like it happened logically, that we are not just making this up, right? And that's a very tricky thing, I think that's very challenging. Um, but we think it's totally doable, I mean, we're not there yet, I mean, but, you know, we, we think we can get there. Um, and then, you know, the, the rear of the building, we haven't developed this far. But because it's gonna be more uniformly three stories for, for more of it, not all of it. Uh, there would be more consistency back there, but we don't see that necessarily as a problem. It's not really the side that's gonna be experienced by the majority of people, and frankly, you know, you gotta make choices. You know, we're prioritizing the canal, and then we're saying, okay, if we're gonna break the scale down. And still make this work, you know, from a financial perspective. We're prioritizing canal, we've, the rear is gonna be, uh, you know.
It's such a success, no.
But it just won't have as much modularity as it typically is.
There actually might be more marketability or interest in having a unit on the railroad side. Because in some instances, you'll have a rooftop deck on the canal side for your, for your unit, so you get really both sides.
Right, we, we like that, because, you know, you initially think those rear units would be less valuable, but. Those would be the only ones that can get the roof terrace on the front side, so you gotta go to the back to get the terrace on the front, you know, have a nice, nice company. Uh, then, you know, if you turn to page twelve, you know, there's some minor variations here, you know, the variations can evolve with the design. But it's the same idea, so I'm, I'm not gonna go over this, it's very similar to building one. But it will be a different palette, you know, some new variations, maybe some different kind of gestures and things, but the same ideas. And then I'm gonna skip, skip past that, if you don't mind, and we're gonna go to page fourteen. Uh, because I think twelve, thirteen are similar to eleven, so. So this is the last building, this building is a little longer, and it's, you know, the furthest from the village, or, I mean, it's related to the village, but the furthest, you know, the furthest spent. And so here, we kind of said, well, there are these larger buildings on the canal, maybe we should start, rather than keep everything at this same rhythm. Let's change the rhythm and start to aggregate some of these more, uh, together with, you know, more. Continuous materials, so it starts to change scale a little bit, relate maybe more to what's across the canal, just because. If, again, to your point, if, if we don't do things like this, it's gonna look too. We try, right? So what's sideways to then take with this building and say, we've got to change the rules a little bit? Because again, if you don't change the rules, we're gonna have too much of. Even a good thing, it's gonna be just too much, and they're gonna say, okay, I'm tired of that thing. And I think this last building is a good place to do that, because it's, it's a different rhythm than the rest, it's further down the canal. It just can be a different thing, you know, so the same idea is all by, we still have two-story pieces and three-story pieces. We're still bouncing up and down, but maybe we don't change the materials as frequently in, in the kind of, as a process down the road. Uh, we still have all the active entrances and things like that. Um, and then if you want to go page, jump to page sixteen real quick. You've probably seen the diagram before, but, you know, this, you know, for us is really important to show, you know, by. The advantage of flat roofs or very bulked roofs on the, on the back portion, which we might have. The advantages of flat roofs or very low pitch roofs on the on the back porch, which we might have. You know, we couldn't scale this way down, you know, both because of the omission of the fourth floor. But also the omission of these very large. And if we're working more in industrial vernacular, I think the lower pitch or flat roofs work for us, and I think we populate the roofs. With activity, I think that also works for us, and it just brings the scale of the whole thing down. So for us, you know, this is kind of an important kind of change overall to the to the project. Which we think would be, well, that's very measurable, right? I mean. It'll also allow for plantings and vegetation to be a stronger component of the project, you know. Cause they're not gonna be out of scale, you know, four built, four story, five story buildings.
And then also would give the possible opportunity to explore other kind of green infrastructure systems. Like maybe solar panels that we did on Southwoodman, the whole of solar panels and that. Flat roofs, so I mean, there are other good things that could be. Developed and explored if they're viable for for the site. And green roofs and other things that we'll be kind of looking into then, that will give us a chance for that. And like you see in the renderings of pergolas and some vines, and I think it just will really activate the buildings much more. Bring them to life and not just have the big plants, the sads marching down the canal.
And if you turn to the last page, I think, you know, you gotta kind of combine these conceptual drawings, which are still at an early stage. With the kind of materiality that, you know, would eventually be there. And to us, you know, like I said earlier, using natural and more industrial types of materials. Like brick and concrete and metal siding and and, you know, some wood or even weathered wood siding. And maybe some of the metal is just galvanized, you know, or whether maybe there's some weathering steel, which we've used on some projects very successfully. You know, those kinds of things, I think, will add a lot of character to the site. And they're more of this industrial canal vernacular, even if the openings and the scale is all domestic, you know, with domestic nature. I think that all works for us, just like it works at John Place or, you know, other other kind of. The historic industrial canal front buildings, right? So I can go back, we can go back over any of this. But, you know, I think that's the big picture that you guys understand now, and I think we're looking to understand if. Direction is something that you can support or not.
Yeah, and I think in summary, I think it really, we think that we met. A lot of your key components that were in that letter on the February twenty third. And most importantly, the volume of living space that was listed in there. Cubic feet that was of living space, that's really what we. Were giving ourselves as one of the hard parameters and. We started working around that as kind of given him the depth of the building because we agree. Because coming from Monroe Avenue, you see the side of a building and it needs to not look like just a big blank society, I mean, it actually needs to look like a building, so. We think with a first attempt of presenting here to you tonight, I think we're achieving that, we really will get up and see, like Rex said. Trying to find out if we're heading in the right direction for you, so we can hopefully turn this vacant land. Into something a little bit more of an asset to the village.
Page nine of seventeen is your total site plan, right?
Correct, yes.
Yep, that's.
This is my take right now, I am one group member, so I just my. Where where my thinking is right now, so I. What I value. This is the first time that I I hear. Conceptually, something that can move this project forward. So. Which is kind of cool because then we can, we can, we cannot touch the decisions to a concept. And what I'm hearing you say is. Because this is the challenge, so we have a massive project here. And we have this this village with tiny little houses all over the place. So I think you're starting to hit the nail on the idea that you're looking at Main Street. As this massive thing that works, but there is this beauty of a village in historic places that is variation. I'm repeating what you're saying. And that concept is really powerful. Because it comes to understand part of the setting. And connect your project to something within the the historic venue. So we haven't heard that before, so I don't know what to do. That that could be something to work with as you start to generate this variation. And as the pedestrian goes by. And we walk Main Street, that is kind of, I'm trying to understand, you see the variation, things go down, there's a little shop underneath. And and you know, actually, the the corner store that is became very popular, started in the little downstairs basement thing, it was fantastic. So those things of up and down, they they, you discover things as you walk. So that would be something that would be awesome if we can capture that. Because that's the magic of the historic piece, you know, of of recreation, you don't need to match, match, match. But there are pieces of that that village that we can bring in.
Are you, are you saying? That maybe we ought to think in terms of. The residential areas of town more than just Main Street in terms of style?
So I just think that there could be several things going on here, because as you see Main Street, Main Street silently puts. A house, see, so you're walking the main street, the commercial pieces and all that stuff, and silently a house. And there is that space that they are proposing, you see that that here. Yes, so silently, you have this big commercial thing that has variation in and out of things and silently stops. Yes, it's a street for us, and then in the corner, there is this house that is.
Then it goes back down to two story.
Two store, so yeah, the two store, exactly, two stories, and then it just feels more residential. So you, if if you can capture that concept, and this is my opinion, so you have to hear the rest of the board, and maybe they disagree with me. I think if we can capture that, that will reduce. That will be more honoring kind of the history. My my, I think that concept, that's what they're bringing to the table, I think.
Correct.
Please, what do you think?
I I agree, I think that's what I was trying to get at before, is I I I like how you've captured this. These independent buildings that are interconnected and I'm just, I think that going forward, we'll just have to see how. We are able to perceive them as the independent buildings, but we talked about before. And I don't think that we're. To that discussion yet.
We're only at the point where we could say, that's the goal, that's the objective, but, you know, we would approve, you know, obviously that we can do that through the development. But isn't that idea before you can execute it?
Exactly, I I completely agree. I I think that 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 would be the, the way that you described this would be the way that you you can have a building longer than the parameters. That we had originally laid out, and I think it's actually more successful than having eleven or thirteen of the same.
That way first, that's how we started, we were like, okay, let's follow all the rules, right? And then that one was, wasn't working for us, we said, well, can we follow the rule, but, you know, just. Change a little bit by saying, they're individual, but yeah.
To think about it a little bit more, how I would feel about. Maybe, I'm I'm just guessing, you're looking for a little more variety, maybe more of the small ones. Maybe the largest one is a hundred and sixty eight feet instead of having the massive two hundred and fifty.
That's my biggest problem right now, that 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 one last building, it looks massive. Even though you did a brilliant job of trying to separate pieces, it still looks massive.
You know, and I think we, like I said, we kind of felt like. The site was big enough that you could accept even more change at some point, like you need to say, not everything in the village is the same. The rhythm does change, right? You get to certain places and you do run into a bigger building, now how big is too big, you know.
The library, what'd you say?
No, no, that's thinking that last building, I it feels very big.
Yeah, so, you know.
And I mean, we could, I mean, we still have some, we we were also hoping to not be too close to Monroe Avenue, right? Because there used to be a building originally, we eliminated that building, so there is more actually of a buffer and entryway and entry sequence from Monroe into this. Development, so if this would need to get stretched, because we have parking underneath.
Jeff knows this better than I, but I think. I think the planning and zoning board, who's really concerned about the fire department's coming down there, is gonna have a problem with that last building. Cause they can't get to that and through that last building.
I do know about that. And when I know about that, it's not our business.
I know, I'm just trying to.
But I really think that for the purposes of of this. We need to to hone in on what we think is right for this one.
Okay, I've already stated, I think that last building looks too massive.
Maybe there's a way for us to see a look at that and say, okay, what what can we do there? Because this is still an idea, right?
Uh, so I'm I'm, I don't mean to be too theoretical here, so, but. And I don't bring. The history of architecture or anything, but. When. So I want to understand your intention, so if I were to take your building, the one that you designed. Put it in Montana. Any place in Montana, do people will think, oh my God, that's, that should fit in the East Coast?
I think it is because of really the materials we're thinking is more the. Warehouse canal vernacular that you find here along the Erie Canal, we did a building in Buffalo, along the Buffalo River. And it was an old warehouse, five hundred feet long, and we rebuilt, the building was falling down and we would put a building in the same footprint. But it was all with a Corten steel, so it still looks like a rusty warehouse, but it's all apartments now. So I think these finishes that we're picking, I don't think to me, say Montana, they're more. For what you find around here along the Erie.
I can't bring you a picture, I just came back from Bogalum. So that's what I'm saying.
So that was a trick question. Did you bring those storms too?
No, but my point, my my question is because, so the, what what I'm seeing lately, and I was in Austin, Texas, I went to Bogalum. It's not that I traveled, it's just my family, you know, that's why I call it. So it seems to be that kind of the the. The fashionable, this this is becoming very fashionable. What I see here. So, 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 I was, I, once again, I value very much conceptually where you're going with this. And I think that capturing, that's that's a very challenging thing. But because if not, and I don't mean to be theoretical, and I apologize, but you know, in the history of architecture, so because you 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 were in a history book. So there are theories in architecture in which is modern architectures, you can put any building around the world and everybody will say that building is smaller. Because it's supposed to fit any place around the world. In a historic preservation district, the intention is that that doesn't happen. That whatever you see, oh my gosh, the East Coast, that is that area of the vernacular or the folk house. Or that little, you know, the Victorian, that is not really Victorian, but because of the decoration, but it continues to be a folk house. Which is the house of the dairies, take a whole house, but they put all this little decoration, a window, it's a bit longer, Victorian, which is, if you take, you know what I mean? So that's who we are, that humbleness. How, if we were to take to take this, and that will be your challenge, because as you said, this is the preliminary approach to a solution. That we're dealing here mostly with mass and scale, not really style. So so these things, so my question is, the challenge would be, how can we say, oh my gosh, East Coast? That's so Rochester and that, yeah.
That's so village.
That's so the village.
Yeah, and that's gonna be very tough, I'm not saying that.
I make a point that touches on both style and mass and scale. All of the brick here, I mean, I I I like your concept, makes more sense, but I think, and I like. This is wood, is that right? Yeah. But the brick, all of that brick makes it look too much like downtown Rochester.
Yeah, it's not necessarily brick, if you can see here, this this is just conceptual materials. But, you know, this is some kind of clappard siding, some kind of fiber cement that ties in. This is a board on battening look, you see this all over the village, and and tie in with brick. This is just a color change, maybe it's clamber, maybe it's. It 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 could be a portion of it brick, but yeah, like the picture he showed you on the phone, more city look, that's more brick. That's not the worst.
I'm wondering if you can explore some of, you know, for your, you know, it would be fun to just. And you don't need to have this whole thing, we just explore like pieces of the building to see. You know, and materials, like what materials will, you know, bring this transformation or this movement. Because that's the same thing, Main Street, we have brick, but we have one or two, you know. The rest, if you look where it's bringing the village, that's a, because that's a Rich Arsonian. You know, the one, the the main village is Rich Arsonian, they go with the towers, there is, where you are supposed to meet with the town. Yes, that is Richard, so that kind of little, that's the curious thing. But that's, that's, we cannot say, oh my gosh, the village of Pittsburgh is that, because it is not, so, yeah. And then, but we see, you know, these kind of materials, yes, we fish in place with these industrial pieces. But then the flower mill is kind of the one that that takes, you know, is is the the master, you know, when you you go there. That's the one that takes kind of the, the center stage.
And it's all siding.
Yeah, exactly.
It's all the same siding.
And I'm not saying that we should not do this, or that you should not, it's, what I'm saying is.
Well, maybe maybe they'll read that when you, you know, you hit a section of this building, maybe, you know, this section will read that flower mill. Right?
Yes.
Same same materials and proportions.
So it's distinguishable from the rest.
Yeah, there's, there's, anyway, I I think still there should be, the the other materials that you were bringing previously. I maybe I'm wrong, they were probably a little bit closer to what we're, or no?
In you mean pre- previous to this presentation?
Yeah.
The the materials are, again, and we need to go back and make sure it meets the special permit. But it's long lasting materials, bricks and siding and.
Oh, that would be nice.
And, right.
It's simply, I'm thinking about style, how does it, how, once again. If I put this in Montana, they will say, it's the village or East Coast.
We understand your point.
Yeah.
A lot of the, yeah. These drawings are showing other material, it does look a lot like brick, but I think our intention wasn't that it would be that much brick, there'd be weathering steel and wood, or there'd be other materials. They would be tar, but they wouldn't have to be brick.
That really does help. With the mass and scale, you know.
But but the issue of how do we make this the village of Pittsburgh as opposed to Bogalum? You know, that is very tricky, you're right, because, you know. But I must think we, even traditional buildings, you could see a Victorian house in Pittsburgh, you could see a Victorian house in Chicago. And you might not know if you're in Chicago or Pittsburgh, right? Because the style is well done, it's. and you might not know if you're in Chicago or Pittsburgh, right? Because the style is well done, it's the same era, right? It could have been built in eighteen seventy there, or eighteen seventy here. But there's still a character to a, the East Coast, it's different, you still know you're here. It's very hard to do your fingers on why, all those things to the case. I mean, if you're on Cape Cod, it's a little more, it's a little easier, because they have a certain vernacular on Cape Cod that. There's other places like that, right?
Yeah, I hear you.
Like a Greek island or something, kind of know where you're at, you know?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But, you know, here, it's a little bit more transparency, right? It's a little bit more like, you know, you're not airport, and if I blindfold myself, you know, I mean, at one point, you know, how do you tie it down? But I think you're right, we don't want this to get to just be
generic.
Generic, any, any persons or any place vernacular or industrial, right? So how do we get to the next lead? That's gonna be tricky.
And I think all our, yeah, all our projects, we don't get up in the morning just trying to do something generic, we get up and we hope, and our goals are to do something that will leave something better behind. So I think it's really not just, um, we're not opening a drawing drawer and pulling out another, another building that we've done before. This really will be developed to be for this site, to be for this location, and it's not just, we can't just transplant it somewhere else.
And hopefully we can get there, you know, I think, you know, that will be the final measure of the success. If you can get to the point where you say, yeah, this is, feels like East Coast, feels like Pittsburgh.
I just think that when you, you look at Main Street and look at that as a way of looking at that diversity of buildings and materials and proportions, I think that's a good, good thing to grab, to, to guide the conversation. Because we, we have, that has been hard to conceptualize it. It's, yeah.
Speaking, speaking of Main Street and, and this, and this may fly a little bit in the terms, in the face of the perception of too much mass and scale, but would it be appropriate to, to make this compatible with the village in total, to have just a couple of pitched roofs thrown in here on the smaller buildings?
I totally agree.
What do you guys think?
I think it would be cool.
I think you need a little bit of eclecticism or variety or kind of surprise, right? And those things, even though you don't want to build up the mass and create big volume, to have little expressions that are like that.
On, on some of the smaller buildings.
Yeah.
I think we need it, because if, if you look at Champlaine, Champlaine has them. And even the industrial, the most fantastic that was, actually was moved from Syracuse, they wanted the corner by, there's a building that was moved from Syracuse to be preserved, they want to have the Clary story, uh, the, the, no, the little, um, cupulas. If you go and look at it, it's, uh, the last one before you start the street, uh, Show and Place. That's a pretty cool, but they were brought from Syracuse, I think. Which it has, and, and some of the things, uh, the previous projects had some little elements here and there that do not need to exactly replicate that, or just be kind of this, this, like, attached to that nostalgic thing, no, that, that's not the intention, you, you modernize it, but.
Yeah, but you need those elements for just that kind of surprise factor, or the kind of, you know, to create variations that even on the, on the skyline, you know, just to get a little bit of more interest there, otherwise it may get too.
Montana.
Yeah, 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 there you go.
I'm gonna break them on that.
I have to say, just I saw it, and I, I thought he was making, and then it's, it's becoming a cookie powder for around the state.
Yeah, like somebody said, it gets it back to what you're not looking for, what was, you made a place, what was that, you're not looking for.
I've cut.
Eight percent, yeah, or Las Vegas.
And I wanted to bring up, so if we just apply some gables for the sake of a shape, that also would be heading in the wrong direction, then you're just applying, uh, parts and pieces for the sake of hoping it to look historic or something, but it's just an applique. So I think if we're really looking at shapes, they need to be intentional. And if they don't make sense, and they just look like an applique, then I think as a group and, um, I personally hope to be working and developing this together, um, as a team, just so we can move forward in a linear fashion and not in circles. I think that's, that's, I think, all of our hope, that we can really move this forward together as, as a group.
But let me ask a question, and this is almost academic, so a, a gable is, is a decision on a, on a roof. You know, you decide that I'm going to, to cover this volume with this type of roof, is a decision that is made, and it's, it's, uh, for multiple reasons here, beauty, snow, it would be kind of a good idea to have a gable. And flat roofs are not kind of our traditional way of building around here.
Right, except for, you know, right, underdustability, but certainly not that, it's not the history of the, you know, something you couldn't build many years ago, you could build these very low sheds with tarp paper roofs or something like that, but you couldn't build flat, very fast.
Yeah, so, so I'm thinking that part of that character is just bringing some, you know, it's why, why flat and why no gable?
Yeah, no, we have a few little, uh, sloping roofs on this, but not many, and I think.
Yeah, this is a, as an angle and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also one of the things.
You like that or not, that style? It's not in every corner, it just highlights some.
I like variety, I like variety, yeah.
One of the things that this designed, because we have a two-story and a three-story portions, so if you have a two-story portion with a roof terrace, and then you got a three-story portion behind it, that three-story portion is only about thirty feet deep, right? So if you put a gable on top of that, it doesn't get overwhelming, right? One of the problems the last scheme had was, you have buildings that were sixty feet deep, by trying to do a gable, it's huge.
Fifteen feet high.
Yes.
Yeah.
So now, you know, if we were doing a gable, it wouldn't be over the full sixty feet, it would be over thirty feet, so now it's only eighty high or sixty five.
Very good point, Bill, and in fact, one of their earlier versions had a lot of that, and I made him take it off, because I said, Bill's gonna kill me. It's too big, it's too big, stick to the, stick to the.
You put that on one of these long buildings.
Yes.
But, but here and there, I mean, I, I, let's go back to Main Street and, or Show and Place, nothing is the same, no two buildings are the same, it's a variety that makes it distinctive. And so what I'm urging you to do is put as much variety in this as you can.
Yeah, no, we agree, and I think as long as we can get the scale down, so those elements don't get too.
Yes, right.
So it's more of a texture, the texture has to be, you know, appropriate, and the way we've broken down the buildings now, I think will allow that to happen. You know, whether we have these little gables that some of us were kind of advocating for, or whether we're just kind of flat the roofs out, you know, those are conversations that we need to have, well, internally with you guys.
But I hear, I think that it makes sense that it's impossible to create that gigantic, I'm thinking out loud after, so those gigantic with a gable, so they're, they're, they, this look, they look a lot more, they do not. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, so do I here overall, do you think we have, we're heading in a direction where we're achieving your desires?
Let's talk about volume first.
Yes, and that's what I mean here, that's why I picked this one up.
Volume, we, we tried to, to meet that criteria, and they, and they hit it on, on pretty much on the number. So in terms of that, what I'm hearing is, that's generally acceptable, but now they gotta go back and make this thing look good in the, in the, in the intimate details, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, what was your volume calculation?
Pretty.
I was about one, one point eight eight, and it was a rough estimate, so I thought you guys really did hit it.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we, we accept one point eight eight.
Maybe Billy should shake his ass.
Can we sign off, can we vote now?
By now, we, we, we accept that. I, I, and I think what we've said about mass and scale and, and they had, summarize, your concept that, that, that we all seem to like of, of, of the smaller visually, visually buildings backed up by a larger building.
Three-story backed up by a three-story.
Yeah, it, it, it really does help in terms of perceptual mass and scale. I think putting in more variety of materials, distinguishing, uh, when I looked at this, I thought, boy, it's an awful lot of work there. But as Chris said, maybe it's just. Uh, and I think that, so I think you've taken some nice steps in, on the issue of mass and scale, except for that last building, which, which has to be broken up.
Yep.
Another thing that, that you guys said, and I, this is of value, is that thus the buildings, as you walk by the building, they become a series of events.
Yeah.
That was the most powerful, who said, you guys. So you said a series of events that are inspired on, uh, when, uh, when, inspired by walking, uh, Main Street. And that, that variety, uh, the multiple entrances, that was, that was, that's super important, because then uh, you also said that, like, we, we value is, we're honoring the experience of the pedestrian as this, uh, trying to replicate a little bit, or mimic the experience that a person has when they walk, uh, by Main Street. So that's something that is of value here, I, do we agree?
All your neighborhoods, you know, as you walk, whether it's a porch, or an entrance, or a stoop, or whatever it is, it adds interest and it's a conversation that you have to be building.
Sure.
So we'll have balconies, we'll have entrances, all along these things to generate that conversation.
If you, if you notice the village, and the houses in the village, well, a lot of front porches, uh, because people want to sit outside in, in various ways, and, uh, uh, so front porches are part of the character of the village.
Yeah, and I think in, in the canal, it's likely to be primarily balconies and roof terraces, because a little different vernacular, it's a different location, you know, but it's the same idea, right? And I think we can make that work, it will communicate the same.
But there's still ground floor walk-ins.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the connection that he's talking about.
And we can do all, all the ground floor is, essentially, we'll be able to be access from the exterior, which will be great, even though they
They probably will come park their car, but there's also a chance to get visitors and friends comes, they can come step onto your porch or terrace and come into your house.
Because that's so, that's, yeah, that's the village. Where I sit down, my boy, just watch the parade, we'll buy.
Now, now watch the fire trucks in the mother.
Which is other privileges that I, we get, where we live in little places like this, they go, the break, the baseball game. What am I, very spoiled people here.
Any other questions for us? Um, do you have anything to add to what?
I don't, I mean, just, just to say that I do feel like your head is in a good direction, and I, I appreciate the, the effort that's gone into understanding what, what it is that's going to be sympathetic to our, our existing village. And I, um, just as feedback, and because we haven't mentioned this, um, the appreciation of the energy at the first level, and, and what you're saying about at the the upper levels, um, to create that energy and interest in, in those places, I think is really gonna help this whole project be successful and, the intentional third stories in the back, I mean, I think that's gonna help a lot.
And your part, having about, you know, trying to do this without making it look like we're trying to do this, you know? It was an important habit, because, you know, you want to create this variety, but it can't look too forced, right, or too, and intentional, right? How do you make it look organic? Like you said, other places evolve over time, this is not gonna evolve over time, I mean, that, that's your, I think it's similar to the, about how to make it look like Bozeman, you know, those are very interesting things.
Yeah, they should be found places on it, so it's like, oh my God, what we just created, and then someone's moving a pallet out on a roof deck and put a little railing around and keeps growing, so I think, um, that's really what we're hoping.
So we did a building downtown some years ago called the Saginaw, it's a kind of a new building down on East Avenue, near Gibb Street, you know? You know, it's a somewhat traditional building, because that was what the market was, and the developer really wanted to go in that direction, so it's somewhat traditional. And I, some people were talking to us about this building, and they couldn't believe it was new, you know, they were like, oh, this is not a new building, it's been around for a long time. Ideally here, too, even if we're not using, you know, traditional details, you'd like, people walk by this building, won't necessarily say, you know, oh, that was just constructed, you know, because it needs to have a little more of a timeless quality, I think some of these more vernacular buildings kind of, you know, bridge a lot longer time scale, you know, you don't necessarily say, you know, like the Show and Place area, it's hard to pin down when some of those buildings were built, you know what I'm saying? And that's, I think, okay.
I know, yeah.
Well, just, uh, without reiterating all this to summarize, nice, nice start. Conceptually, I think, uh, you're moving in a direction that we feel comfortable with. Uh, some refinements that we've asked for, and, uh, good job, you hired yourself some good.
Yeah, they've done, they've done a good job. And again, if, if, as time goes on, if you have any interest in seeing the building that we just finished downtown, which they did, it has some of these features in it, some material features, um, but seeing the inside, you might get a flavor of it too, so please, I'd be really proud to show you if you have any interest. So. Excuse me?
I'm thinking, I think they have to be my summer.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. If you, if you're interested.
I think.
So I, I'm gonna just reiterate so that we're clear. What we're gonna do next is that we're gonna work on that last building and break it up somehow, when we hear what you're saying there. We're gonna work on the materials, we're going to work on.
To, to, to work on the materials in order to provide a bigger variety of.
Right.
As, as we develop it, for us, that's gonna come naturally, but we haven't proved it yet, so we'll need to prove it to you. We, we see it's gonna happen, but we can't see yet, definitely we'll get there.
And then we're gonna work on pitched roof concepts, gables, breaking up the roof so it's not all flat in some, in some areas.
Not, not wholesale.
We agree. So we're gonna work on these, any other things that I, general things?
So one of the things that we cannot forget, remember how you started telling us the story? When you walk by Main Street, and that, here, a series of events. You should call him in every.
I wrote it down. I got it. Series, series of events inspired by walking on Main Street, I got it, right here.
We'll make a T-shirt for the next meeting.
It's, it's, yeah, it's like, uh, it's honoring the, the pedestrian and the, and this, it starts to honor the scale that if you think about people, that, those of us who live in the village, we suffer, the old building, you see how it's all corporate, it's too, you open up, uh, and this is too much information, you, you try to remodel something in those houses, and it's a nightmare. But we take that because we like this scale, I think that's what we, what the village is all about, is, is that scale of walkability, that our children walk to school. You know, you, those, those, those things that are lost because of modern architecture. Because modern architecture said, we can't put a building any place in the world, and we're going to standardize architecture, and that's, even though this is standardized architecture, the intention once again is, how do we make sure that this does, is not, is not, you know, we don't try to take a picture and say, oh, hey, Montana! Okay, I have said that too many times.
So we're gonna make changes, we're going to submit another set of drawings that are more refined, showing these things, and hopefully we can proceed from there.
Good, perfect, yeah.
On the same page?
We'll set up a meeting as fast as we can.
If I could just ask a quick question, I know Chris was excited, uh, asking, because I have a question for. We had asked, and I know you referred it. Um, we had asked, and I know you referred it to the planning board, we have anybody from the planning board here?
No, no. They may be, they're probably.
You might be listening.
Chair, the, the chair is, was gonna try and view this virtually.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the plan was that people were gonna try to, to, to be here virtually.
I don't see him on now, but I think he was on earlier, yeah.
So.
No, not Justin.
No, Justin's not.
He has to recuse himself.
So I think this recording is gonna be available.
Who was the chair of the panel?
Justin Blais.
Susan Loda is the chair of that.
No, I didn't speak her online.
No, she called me and said she had to.
This will be available.
Okay, so we, we need to, we obviously need to go back to the other boards also, but we're concentrating with, with you.
Right.
Thank you again for your time, it's good to see you guys.
Yeah. We survived COVID, that's good.
That's right.
And we're all sorry about Tony.
Thank you, thank you, thanks. Um, please call me if you have any questions as we go, or any other thoughts. Just if you have any other thoughts in the meantime, while they're, you know, making their next drafts, just let me know.
Okay.
And if we have public input that we get, we'll get along to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll make sure, I'll take it on myself to make sure that, that, uh, members of the eligible planning board get a recording or the notes of this and are aware of exactly what happened, okay?
Perfect.